Going to make a slight change to the agenda and we have Jean Kazner from Chester County Health Department as our guest this evening and due to her schedule, we'd like to to put her up first. Jean, I want to welcome you back and you're up.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for inviting me back. You were super gracious in providing questions in advance. So what I thought I would do is just kind of read through those, respond to them and kind of open it back up to see if there's any outstanding questions, if that's acceptable. So the first question is, what can be learned from the approximately 18% of cases that reported attending or working at K through 12 schools as an exposure risk? Is that number higher or lower than you would have expected at this point? Just for everyone's edification, that number comes from the Protecting Our Progress report and frankly, in both counties, that particular exposure risk is moving up in kind of like the top 10 list. We did expect to see this risk increase. It's simply due to the fact that more schools are, you know, bringing in more children and more staff. We do find that Delaware County progressed quicker into the, all Delaware County schools progressed a little bit quicker in the timeline than Chester County. So we're likely going to see that increase a little bit later in Chester County. Some of it is bringing staff in for training and orientation and getting them acclimated if they are not already teaching out of the classroom. So yes, we expected it and we expect it to continue to increase for a while. You've got to remember, these are exposure risks. They are not case positive risks. So it's not to be translated as coming into school increases your risk because at this point, we have more people bringing positive cases or exposures to the school than what is happening within the school. And that's exactly where we expected to be and that's where we want to remain, that we don't see transmission within the school. So the next question, are there any safety measures being reconsidered? As Dr. Roche has heard in many of our superintendent meetings, as well as any other types of, you know, community sectors we're working with, we're always going back and re-reviewing our guidance and we are basing it on any new information that comes out or any new data that is received, whether it's data from our county or data nationally. So at this time, we are reviewing the guidance that is centered around what would indicate that a school needs to return to a more virtual instructional model when the incident rate and positivity rate begins to trend consecutively higher for two weeks. So based on what we understand now, we are likely going to, well, we're currently reconsidering how that guidance is structured to really take into account a comparison of what's going on in the community versus in the school. So looking at the trends and the outbreaks in schools, looking at the ages within the community, understanding whether the transmission is more community-based or within the school, looking at failed health screening trends. So how many people call or calling you to say, I failed my home screening, I have symptoms, and then also looking at community outbreaks. So a good example of this, if you have followed it, is what we saw in the Westchester area school district. So even though their numbers as a school district were trending high, we understood as the health department, what was the basis for that? It was really what was going on in the community, not within the school. And because we could trace back to that, we are not telling that school district, you can't begin your hybrid process. We're more concerned if we can't trace it back, hence we go into this community transmission that we don't know where things, you know, cases start and exposures also start. And we know that there is not transmission going on within the Westchester area school district building. So because of that, they're going to progress, even though their, you know, district levels are not in that direction. So that's really where, now that we've seen some of your schools in action, we've learned from what some of the summer programs we're doing, that we can add a little bit more context to when we would push toward guidance on going to more virtual. So that is definitely one we are undertaking. There is consideration being given to if there are multiple cases in a, in a school, we may need to give guidance to schools to go ahead and automatically shut down for a day or two. So my team has the time to go through the depth of those investigations to actually give a more informed guidance. That one is not as through the process of review as the first one I mentioned. So those are two examples. I know our superintendents heard from me that as we start to see our incidents and positivity kind of get into the same threshold, most are in two different thresholds, and as we get closer to the low threshold, we will have to look at, do we see enough positive trend to reevaluate the six feet versus three feet? It's very difficult to do that now without having enough time under our belt with enough students in school. In addition, it's extremely difficult to do it with the new or the newer information around it being more airborne than thought and the impact of the ventilation within the setting, whether it's a building, a home, a works, or a school building, a home, or a work site of any nature. So those are kind of the ones on the horizon. We're kind of keeping on our radar, much like we did with, you know, the 25 versus 250 group setting. So this is not unique to the school guidance. We do it across the board as information or further guidance comes out that relates to the guidance we've put out. All right, the next question, what has the health department learned about the spread of COVID from places in Pennsylvania and across the country that have previously returned to in-person schooling? So I always find this as a difficult question and frankly, it's because we don't have enough insight into how these other areas, particularly outside of Pennsylvania, what their commitment to these prevention measures are. What is the guidance they were giving? What is the school's diligence and quite frankly fidelity around it? So, you know, you all saw the Georgia news and I spent 20 years in Georgia and I cannot imagine what was in place if that, if, if what they experienced transpired. I am unbelievably humbled by how much our school districts, both in Delaware County and Chester County, have really committed to taking this seriously and putting the health and safety of staff, students, and the broader community. So I am confident that you all have had enough time, enough appreciation, and enough value in putting these things into place that we're going to naturally be better. And we know there's varying successes. We know in neighboring counties, they're having varying successes and it is difficult to pinpoint what is the key to that success because there's so many factors at play. It's a layering of all these prevention measures and it's difficult to peel it back and say, which one was the failing one if it wasn't just an outright disregard for that measure. You also hear the more recent news about New York City and some of their closure of schools because of hotspots in the community. So, you know, and I just heard from my peer in Bucks County that they're not seeing transmission within schools. We're seeing some, but the, the more significant trend, and this is both within schools and the school sports community, is yes, there's positives, yes, there's exposures, but we're catching them sooner. And we're catching them early enough that it doesn't progress into the building as prolifically or onto the rest of the team. And that is, that is purely because of the seriousness with which your staff take it. And the coaches are cooperative, the, the school pandemic teams are cooperative. So that's really where our success is. So it's a difficult question because there's so many variations and so many different levels of commitment and guidance out there. But I'm confident in what we have here in both counties and look forward, quite frankly, to see how it actually transpires. All right, next question, is there anything in local viral loads and trends that suggest how long this window to conduct in-person schooling may stay open? So, and this is the guidance I gave my team just this week as I'm processing, how, what's this going to look like and how, you know, we're hearing rumors that even, you know, our teachers are, ah, we're going to be in this for two weeks and then we're going to have to go back to virtual. Our goal, and this is what I shared with my team this week, our goal should be keeping them in that in-person. So once we've crossed that bridge, doing everything we can to keep them in, regardless of the viral loads, regardless of the trends, because if we're not seeing the school be the factor for transmission, we should keep in-school, whether it's hybrid or in-person, full in-person, as long as we can. Because the evidence is showing it's what is coming in to the school. Now, we may have to increase our communication back out to our families and our staff and our community to further express, listen, we can't have sleepovers like you want. We can't have the locker rooms pre, you know, sports game like we're used to. You may have to come ready to go in your gear and move right into the field. So it may alter some of the communications to keep it at bay at your doorstep. Because you and I, we can't control everything going outside, going on outside the building, but what we can do is encourage different practices when they leave. So when they come back, the risk is lower. All right, next question, can you review for our board and public, under what circumstances will you advise closing a classroom or recommending quarantine for all students and adults in the classroom? So this is a great question. It's a very common question. The, the basis of that decision starts with the information we glean from our case investigations and our contact tracing. So let's talk about closure from an outbreak. So in an outbreak, an outbreak is defined, I should start with, as two or more cases in a classroom or cohort. And we say cohort because it may be a band, it may be the football team, within an onset of that 14-day period that are related to each other. So I always use the classic example and I apologize if I've used this one at a previous meeting with you. But if we have, let's say, a, you know, a fourth grader and a, you know, teacher in the same building as two positives, that's not necessarily an outbreak because the fourth grader may have brought it from a family barbecue and the teacher may be a close contact to a case and has so related. So even though the cases in one building, close the building, we need to understand the relationship between those two cases before we close a building. Not only because we don't want to rush into closing, but more importantly, we need to see going on in the school so we can advice around the prevention measures. Do a review of the prevention measures. Look to see where the failure may have been. And there may not be a failure, but we have to do that due diligence. So, and these individuals should not be sharing contact household or household contacts. So there's a lot that goes on. It's like this concentric circle we have to kind of expand from to say, are these related? If so, that's now an outbreak. Then from there, we continue to monitor if we get additional cases to that outbreak within a 14-day period to that same class or cohort, then we do have to consider closure. Now that closure may be just of that classroom. And when I say closure, it means send them home. It doesn't mean close, they get stopped learning and stop teaching. If people are well enough, adult and student alike, they can move back to the virtual and continue with it. Of course, you're the one who decides if, you know, your staff are well enough to do that, being a case or an exposure and what your policies are around that. And then, so, and then the other factor is, do we have multiple outbreaks going on in that building? Then yes, we may make a recommendation, whether it's a wing, a classroom, or the entire building. Now, when it comes to, so that's the general framework. I have to tell you though, there is a bit of case-by-case basis or strategy that we have to implement because no two buildings are the same, no two classrooms are the same, no two cases or exposures are the same. And I say this because we've had to do case-by-case. And we've had, at least in Chester County, we've had entire buildings closed. We also have to recognize that there may be scenarios where you may not be able to staff a classroom based on exposure or cases. So that, that may be your decision, even outside of us, due to staffing limitations. So the other piece of it is the quarantine side of it. This one, there's, there's a clear definition of who gets defined as a close contact and therefore go into quarantine. And whether that's two kids in a classroom or the entire classroom, that is based on, again, those concentric circles of the case and how much exposure they had in the school. So we consider a close contact, any individual on that campus who has been in, within six feet or less of the case, the person who's positive, for 15 minutes or more, regardless of mask wearing. So if you have a, let's say a teacher is positive and let's say that teacher is the first grade class. If that classroom spent all day in the room with her and she was roaming around the room all day long doing, you know, breakout groups, et cetera, et cetera, all within the social distancing, but we know she had to do, you know, be, go within that six feet. Let's say she had to do a reading assessment, just playing this out, and it was within a six feet for more than 15 minutes. Those in that reading group would be close contact and it could be the entire group. Let's say they did reading on the rug and we took an opportunity to go less than six feet because we were hoping to get it done in 10 minutes. So it really depends on the scenario, but your staff have that definition to know exactly whether that whole room or a portion is going to be quarantined because they're providing that to my staff. Because we're not in the building knowing where that individual has traveled, or if the individual said it as they got off the bus, or in period five, after a long time in the school. So I, I understand this may get complicated and it's not always a black and white. We're used to it because we do this for 75 different diseases all year long. And we're trying to teach you, your community, and our other, you know, you know, county leaders about this in a very stressful time. So happy to take on questions when we're done to see if it, I can make it clearer. And I believe this is the last question, and this does relate to the question we just answered. What are the factors to be considered when deciding if the school or district should close for a period of time? Are those factors different when considering for two to three days, 10 to 14, or 100% virtual? So I'm going to start with the last one. That 100% virtual I covered earlier, we really need to look at what the trends are and if there is prolific outbreaks or transmission going on, then we would say, yes, let's get you back into a more virtual model. So then we can wait out that time, let the curve come back down, and then bring folks back in. The 10 to 14, that is really based on whether you're a positive case or a, a close contact. So this is relevant to the individual, not an entire school or a district. So 10 to 14 days would be if we had an outbreak that was widespread. Then we know that whole building, if it's a widespread outbreak, would have to sit out for those 10 to 14 days. So just for everyone's edification, if you're a positive case, you are isolated for 10 days. If you're a close contact, you're quarantined for 14. So that's where that 10 and 14 come from. And then the two to three days, I'm not sure where that consideration is coming, but it is being discussed in the event a, an exposure or a case becomes too big due to the investigation, that we need time and is to get through it, to give you a meaningful guidance based on the data. And it's better to keep people safe at home and bring them back in sooner than to say, we had three days of exposure that we could have prevented. So we're going to err on that side of being more cautious until we have time and trends under our belt. So I hope that answered the questions. Certainly entertain follow-up questions to my responses here or any new ones that may have come up. And Dr. Roche, if I have missed any due to my inbox, please, you know, let me know.
Questions and comments from the board and if you could please use the raise hand feature? Kristin?
Hi, Director Kazner. Thank you for joining us this evening. I did have a question. I'm thinking about the three Ts of pandemic response, testing, tracing, and treatment. And then there's that fourth T of time. Now, something that I've been mulling over recently, having gone through my own experience with my daughter who's in daycare needing to get a COVID test, thankfully she tested negative, time is a concern of mine because testing isn't readily available. In my own personal experience, we had to go through the pediatrician, then the pediatrician had to get us in touch with a nurse, and then we had to call CHOP and then set up an appointment. I mean, there's just a lot, the time's ticking here. And should this, had this have been a positive case, we, I mean, the tracing wouldn't have been able to start, I'm assuming, until after, you know, we got test results. So I guess my concern is like, what happens in that time in between from like, once you can actually get the test to getting the results? Like, when, when does the tracing start within this process? And I guess related to that, are there any efforts within the county or the area to ramp up testing, especially the pediatric levels, being that K to 12 schools are opening again?
Yeah, excellent questions. So from a timing standpoint, there are certain scenarios, and not knowing your child's specific scenario, but there are certain scenarios where my team can start some level of the investigation, which then feeds into the contact tracing even before a test result. So those are the ones that are really looking like classic, like we're, the, the test is almost like a formality in those scenarios. And those are the ones we do want to jump on if we can because they're, they're adding, they have the highest risk of impacting others. The rule of thumb is, and this is irrespective of schools, students, adults, it doesn't matter. The blanket rule of thumb is if, if there was a need that drove you to get tested for COVID, you should be staying home until you get your results. So, so that helps mitigate some of the exposure while someone is waiting. Now, in terms of testing time, I, we are, we are definitely experiencing, in my mind, pediatrician, too many pediatricians that aren't equipped to test or are not, that is not their default to, to test. So my recommendation is that you seek out the county testing site. So Delaware County has a testing site. Right now, I believe it moves around to different locations and then they're going to try to anchor at least one site to be a little bit more permanent. And that won't be till a little bit toward November. And I say that because they're using the same approach we're using for testing, the same lab. And right now, our lab is actually running, everybody knock on wood, I hope I'm not jinxing myself, we're running three to four days. But we are seeing pharmacists and other practices into that seven-day, nine-day again, which is just, it's really long. So that's one factor. And we are always looking at how do we shrink that time from test to result? The other, and then, and then you had the experience of from being told you need to get tested to actually finding a test. So if we, and you're more than welcome to come into Chester County as well. We have a little bit more of a regular schedule and we are, I know Delaware County is blending their COVID testing and flu vaccination. So they've had to back off of some of their COVID testing to accommodate the flu. We, we're doing them in parallel without any reduction in it. So more than welcome to come to any in the Chester County area. In addition, we're trying to work with like NAMERS and CHOP to get them re-engaged to doing more and using their own labs. Now, there's a challenge, there can be a challenge in that because they can only do that so long if you're not their patient. Right? And then the other avenue that's being sought, and you may have heard this, particularly I knew there were some articles out, at least from the federal government, is trying to bring in antigen testing, which is different than antibody testing and different than diagnostic testing, PCR testing. So this, this is the antigen that indicates that you may be infectious, in which case, if that's positive, you're considered a probable and then you're handled like a probable case, which we already have a protocol for. So the, the state is going to receive these and then that comes down to health departments. And we're trying to partner not only regionally, but with CHOP Policy Lab on how do we leverage these to the best extent? Because they are considered for non-medical use, which means we could, once we have all the criteria in place, use them in a school and know in 15 minutes if that antigen is there, in which case, we can start the investigation and contact tracing. It does not have to be a lab verified. A lab has to be, have oversight, but it does not have to be sent off for a lab. So that's another tool that's being put into place. And we just got some guidance from the state on how that is going to be interpreted. And then we now have to get through the logistics of providing that. So that's going to be prioritized for symptomatic staff and students. And our hope is to expand that to the daycare settings as well, not just traditional K through 12, because we do have challenges in daycares and they don't have a nurse on site in most cases like a school has a school nurse. So that's what I offer to that. We're going to see our testing continue to ebb and flow, particularly as you're starting to see across the country outbreaks and more testing and more, you know, fill in the blank. We're going to cycle through this a couple more times from the capacity of a labs, a lab's capacity to continue and to stay, to stay up to its highest capacity. And it's no fault of theirs, the machines only process so much every day. And many of these places are operating at 24-hour processing. So I hope that was helpful.
That was, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, Antoinette.
Thanks. And yeah, thank you again for, for being here tonight and helping us with this information. So when we originally made the decision to start the school year virtually, one of the reasons that we were given was because of Labor Day and was because we were watching the Labor Day holiday, what was going to happen there. And then maybe that was going to lead to a spike. And so I wanted to know if Chester County has any thoughts on Thanksgiving and specifically whether schools should plan on opening virtually after Thanksgiving as a precautionary measure? I know you're saying, you know, we're not seeing a lot of transmission or, you know, not, not the main source of transmission in the schools, but with something like Thanksgiving, which almost certainly happened indoors with potentially a lot of people, that could be a lot of community spread coming into our schools just a few days later, maybe before folks are even symptomatic. So I just wanted to know if Chester County has been thinking about that and if they have recommendations for that yet?
Yeah, so we are thinking about it and we're kind of mixed. We're kind of, we have half on one side of the fence, half on the other. So we have to come to a reconciliation with that. You know, the, you mentioned the concern about indoors, it's going to be likely colder, bigger, you know, big gatherings, and on top of that, potential travel. Because that is, tends to be a high travel holiday as well. So a high travel holiday as well. So my, like, when, when I'm contributing in those conversations, I look back at Labor Day. Yes, we had a spike, but we didn't stay in that spike as long as I anticipated. It, it started coming down. Now, it didn't just cliff off, it came down in a nice manner that really put us, set us up well, based on the October 9th guidance. So that was good to see. A little perplexing, in Chester County, we actually peaked before the holiday. So I'm curious, and I, it mind boggles me, which meant they stayed in the curve a little bit longer, because then it went up again. So it is something we have, we have to finish our discussion about and really look at the data and make the recommendation, or just provide strong guidance around, you know, stay with your family. You know, it's different if it's family who tends to be in, you know, households or going to visit the same family households versus, you know, we're doing, you know, family friends and doing the travel on top of it. So, you know, and the other, the other side of it, and you'll see this in our, you know, Halloween guidance, and then ultimately our, you know, end of the year holiday guidance. You know, we, we need these holidays. We need them. We need them to come back to our, you know, our sense of self, our, our connections and our mental health and our social health and all of that. So we're certainly not going to say, don't do it. But we, we, we have heard universities saying we're going to send the students home the week before and not come back till New Year. And we also have heard hints of some schools considering strong guidance around traveling. That, and people have to understand the travel restrictions will likely still be in place. So if they are going out of state and come back, they, technically, they should be quarantined. So that, whether you say anything or I say anything, those state travel restrictions will likely still be in place. And they're going to expand and contract based on obviously trends in our neighborhood, actually across the states, not even just the neighboring ones. So stay tuned for that. And, you know, if you don't, don't hear it soon enough, or you're getting antsy, and you haven't heard anything, certainly give us the elbow and say, hey, we're, we're looking for if you're going to, you know, give that, any further guidance.
Great. Thanks so much.
Next up, Laura.
Yeah, my question is sort of related to Antoinette's question, and you touched on it briefly. I know a lot of colleges and universities are closing at Thanksgiving time and sending the kids home and then finishing the semester virtually. I'm assuming that's going to increase the risk for communities, because COVID rates tend to be higher at universities. So how, how is a district, are we able to parse out, sort of like you were saying, like you were saying, it's not the risk in the school versus the risk, you know, so how, how can we sort of parse that out and really know what the school's risk is versus sort of this, this change?
So that's something we would do for you.
Okay.
And so in Westchester, I'm sorry, Westchester area school district is, they're always tuned in to the fact that they have, I think, up to 14 long-term cares in their district and a university, and a university in a densely populated, very active, walkable borough. So they're always tuned in that. So we actively started doing some little studies on the data, because we kept hearing, we need to, we need to understand it. So once they understood, hey, we can identify it, it's not your campuses, so continue on, is when they started breathing deeper. So we can do that. You know, we had it in, with Villanova when you first saw that. And it's in, or if we see an outbreak relevant to, in Chester County, we had an outbreak on in our agricultural industry. As long as we can identify it, that's key. And then we can pull those out, because we have classifiers in the data to be able to do that. What we don't want to do is ignore them when we talk generally, because they're still in the community, right? The only ones I would be willing to consider maybe segregating is our long-term care facilities, particularly those that are providing the higher need care, because they, they truly do stay within their building or on their campus, especially some of them still have restrictions of not leaving campus, even if the residents are mobile and independent. So those are a little bit less integrated in the community versus all of our other areas of outbreaks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Dr. Ruchi, any other follow-up questions?
No, I don't have any other, any other follow-up questions. Just as, again, a sincere thank you to Jean and her team. Even with our children returning this week, we've had a few occasions to call and seek their guidance, and they have been extremely timely and sensitive to, you know, our need to get an answer as soon as possible. So please relay that.
You're welcome. And thank you for not throwing me a tough one, Dr. Ruchi. She gets me in the student, she gets me in these superintendent meetings. Trust me, she's, she's doing her job for you. She's on it. And congratulations for bringing in your younger grades' continued success with that.
Thank you.
All right. You are very welcome. Everyone, please stay healthy.
You know, I'd just like to follow up. I've been on a bunch of calls with superintendents and board members from all over the southeast today, and I, I just can't tell you how much value and how, how great it has been to have you advising these folks.
It's, it's our pleasure. We've learned from you guys probably equally as you've learned from us. So thank you for letting us into your world, and we have to do it together. So keep up the great work, and you know where to find me.
Thank you very much.
All right. You're welcome.